Mayor.
I'd like to call the City of North St. Paul Regular Council Meeting to order. This time, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody. Jenny, if you could take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. This time, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? The motion carries. This time, I have a presentation, and that is for the Walter Housie Family Day proclamation. Is there anybody here from the family at all? If not, I'll read it here. It's, "Whereas the Housie family has a long and historic connection to St. Paul, North St. Paul, and whereas Walter Housie's parents immigrated here from Germany and built two houses on Charles Street across from Housie Park, and whereas Walter Housie was the first police chief in North St. Paul who died in the line of duty in January 1955, and whereas, in Walter's honor, the City of North St. Paul named a city park in his memory, Housie Park, and whereas the Housie family is holding a family reunion this year, the first such reunion in 20 years, at Housie Park to reconnect, enjoy each other's company, reflect on their heritage, and whereas, at the 2021 Housie family reunion, there will be four generations of Housies and about 70 people total in attendance, some traveling far, from as far as Colorado and Washington, and whereas, almost all of the first and second and most of the third generations attended North St. Paul High School, and whereas, through the years, Housies have been members of the North St. Paul community. For example, second generation Chuck Housie ran Kendall's Grocery Store, which was a community staple for many years, and whereas, the City of North St. Paul wants to welcome the Housie family back to a key site in their family history. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor of North St. Paul, do hereby proclaim July 24th, 2021, as Walter Housie Family Day in the City of North St. Paul, in recognition of the Housie family reunion at Housie Park on this day, and all citizens of North St. Paul welcome the Housie family back to the site of the heritage in North St. Paul and hope they have a wonderful family reunion. Signed, the 6th day of July." So, this will go out to the Housie family, and I hope they enjoy their family reunion on July 24th, and I just might stop by and grab a hot dog or something. Sounds like the Housie family's been around a long time, so, yeah. Candy, you got anything on the Housie family? You're kind of the...
Well, the boy, I used to be there many years ago, and I went to school with Sheila. She's a nurse, was a nurse, I think, no? But, no, they were a good family, you know, good stock, and I'm glad we're recognizing that. Thank you.
Good. All right, so at this time, we have the consent agenda, and that's the June 15th Workshop Minutes, the June 15th Regular Meeting Minutes, general claims of $1,891,659.95, the approval of a special event at the American Legion Annual Brat and Corn Fest, the LMCIT waiver for the Economic Development Authority Liability Insurance, the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project Pay Voucher Number 12, resolution to accept the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund established under the American Rescue Plan Act, the resolution approving amended employee manual regarding jury duty pay, resolution approving Councilmember Thorson's resignation of commissions and committees and reappointments, and the resolution approving appointment to the Arts and Culture Commission. This time, if a council member wanted to pull any of the items, they can do so at this time. If not, motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? The motion carries. At this time, the meeting is open to the public, and I have two here. First one is RT to talk about the community center. Welcome, RT.
Thank you, thanks, yeah, for having me. Really appreciate it. Councilmember Wong, thank you very much for your inquiry before we left for Nationals. Went really well. 147 wins, five top 10 finishes, and one third place. We did okay. Thank you.
Very good.
And that said, we also, we come, we come right back, and we get right into our summer program, and we have 220 new athletes coming in this summer to train with us. They'll be here three times a week, if not four. So, we're kind of hitting the ground running. I want to thank you for your patience. I was out of town, obviously, for two weeks, wasn't able to engage in a lot of things, managing 220 families and chaperones, and it was a bit of a process. So, thank you. Wanted to let you know a couple of things. We're still growing, 25% year over year approximately, and now that we're back, what we want to do with the council is we want to move forward with you. We've had some things come up in the past where it seems in our mind like the council wasn't fully informed about stuff. We want to just move forward. We're going to put it behind us. We'd love to, again, I'll propose again, I'd love to sit down with the council and discuss the community center and how we can make it a win-win for the entire community. We know that there are some other ideas out there. How can we help with those ideas? How can we partner? Because we know that the city has a lot of very valuable aspects to it. We're open to those things, and we want to be here to help, so. But we'd love to engage with you in that process, and as against the agenda, maybe that's going to happen.
Yep, you're on the agenda tonight. We're going to approve...
That's great, so, that'd be great. But we're, we're here to walk forward with you. We know the council wants to move forward on a lot of issues, and we're here to walk that path with you.
Good.
So, please, reach out to us. We're here. We want to make it a win-win for everybody.
Good.
All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Sue Springborn. I know, someone's going to trip, and they're just going to go... Welcome, Sue.
Hi. Sue Springborn, 2573 13th Avenue. First thing I want to say is Sheila Housie did grow up here, but she married Chuck Housie's son, and she is going to start volunteering at the museum.
Ooh.
Isn't that nice? Yeah. So, just a little aside. I have been troubled by a few things recently. One of them, it was a couple of months ago, I guess, that a few of us from the Park Commission went up to the water, look at the water tower, look at, excuse me, Northwood Park, and we're looking at the water tower, and there were a lot of electrical boxes up there that at that time were not secured, and we were concerned, and I can't remember where we went with that, but I stopped up there the other day, and now the boxes appear to be secured, but to me and to some of the other members on the Park Commission, it still looks like we need a fence around that thing. I don't know, do you, are all those boxes secure that nobody can get in them? Do you know?
I walked it today.
Oh, you did?
And I actually did find one box that was unlocked. It was a T-Mobile box, and their lock was on top of the unit, so I took it and I locked it back up, but I'm...
Is your mic on, Brian? I don't know if you're...
Sorry, I don't talk very loud. So, that was locked, that was safe, otherwise, the rest of the boxes were secure, no open or exposed electrical units to the public. But, and we've checked that over the years, and sometimes, I can see that some of those have been pulled on, some of the seals that we have up there, a little bit of history, maybe, that, that fence was taken down when they painted the water tower last time, and for all the equipment to get in there and get up to where they needed to be, it didn't get put back up. Some changes were made there. A couple of those workhouses were put underneath there for the tower antennas, so the footprint has expanded a little bit. There were concerns about the equipment that they bring in there sometimes and having access underneath there like they needed to, but that is something that certainly could be looked into, and we could actually reach out to maybe T-Mobile and some of these places to help share in that cost if that was to work out.
Yeah, it looks to me like a liability. That's what, I mean, I don't want a kid to get hurt either, but...
I agree.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's that thing.
And don't say liability.
Pardon me?
Don't say liability.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. Okay, okay. Then there's a couple of other things that, for the last few weeks, I've been thinking about and I'm concerned about, and I'm troubled about. One of it is the word confidential. When I was working, if I was having a performance evaluation or a review, that is confidential. Nobody else is privy to that information, nobody. And I would have assumed, in our government, that would have been the same way. So, I, I don't expect a response, but I am curious, and I'd like to put it in your mind, why the day after Scott Dudek's evaluation was it in the paper? That is, it's been troubling me more and more, so I just wanted to put that out there. I would think that this would be a difficult thing for somebody to come into this city and want to come to work here because of that. I think it's a shameful situation, and I think it needs to be rectified somehow. I don't know how, that's not my job. The other word that I have been thinking about is obligation. When you apply for a job or you file to run for an elected position, hopefully, you would have looked at what the obligation for that job or that position is, and if you can't do it, don't apply for the job, or don't file for election. If you are unable to fulfill your duties, just don't do it then. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I know we're going through hard times right now in regards to staff and all that, and I think we're just working through it right now. Is there, are we doing Zoom at all?
There's nobody with their hands up.
Nobody with their hands up. So, at this time, city, there is no public hearing, city business action items, we have two items, the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project Change Order Number Two, and we have a request to form a committee regarding lease negotiations. So, I'll turn it over to interim city manager, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually going to turn this over to Morgan to discuss this change order number two.
Welcome, Morgan.
Thank you, interim manager Frandl, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item before you here tonight is contemplation of change order number two for the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project, which is under contract with TA Schiffsky &amp; Sons. This is an opportunity to combine a street segment that has been identified for regular street maintenance. It's been on a list by Public Works and would likely need to be attended to in some fashion, but is adjacent to the ongoing and open contract with the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project. There is a location map in your packet, but generally, we're talking about that portion of Third Avenue that is just south of the alley on the south side of Seventh Avenue, between the alley and Helen Street. So, it's a fairly short segment, but it is in disrepair, and with some of the construction traffic, it's gone from bad to worse to in need of immediate attention, and so, staff had talked with the contractor for the 2020 project to see if they'd be willing to honor, you know, their 2020 bid prices for some of the street work, which they did in large part with just the addition of some additional mobilizations, since it's a slightly different area than they're going to be working on anyway. If approved by city council, the, the work would likely be combined with the remaining work here that should occur in the month of July for finishing up the final layer of asphalt on Seventh Avenue, and then we've got some overlay areas, which were already originally a part of the original contract on Fourth Avenue and Second Street from Seventh Avenue north to the frontage road there. So, similar work, not a significant change in terms of scope of work, just a different location is what's proposed here. The estimated amount for the change order, again, based on estimated quantities, is $60,870. The final cost of the change order would be determined on actual measured quantities of the improvements to the street, similar to any project that we would do along these lines. And again, as I mentioned, this segment of street has been on a list that, if it were not to be contemplated in this proposed change order by city council, would likely need to be quoted out and included with some other streets that are slated for either repair or rehabilitation this year or next year. We do have budgeted fund dollars for street maintenance. The current fund balance is, as I understand it, standard approximately $350,000, so that's $60,000, just over $60,000 would be proposed to be funded by that fund and not affect any other funding source currently tied to the overall contract for the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have. The recommendation is approval of change order number two for improvements to Third Avenue between the alley and Helen Street North.
Any questions for Morgan? Not, the motion is to approve the change order number two for the 2020 Street and Utility Improvement Project, SCD 21, to include patuminous paving and spot concrete curb and gutter replacements in a appertinent?
Appertinent.
Appertinent. Thank you. Appertinent work on Third Avenue East from the First Street Alley to Helen Street North. Is there a motion?
I'll move, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson, second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? The motion carries. I just haven't seen that word in a long time. City manager, Brian, the second top...
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, tonight, we have Attorney Koch with us here this evening to discuss this.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be here tonight. As mentioned earlier, the lease with Kokoro Volleyball regarding their facility and the fact that the city owns that property, those lease negotiations have been going on for a while, and in order to button it up and try to really close the deal on this, interim city manager, as well as city attorney Matic, suggest putting together a group with two city council members, and so this small ad hoc committee then can move a little bit more swiftly. They don't have any approval power, they don't have any other legislative power, it's just to keep this ship moving straight and quickly, especially in light of the interim city manager. It would bring a sense of formality, not that he couldn't do a great job, but that would be an added security to this situation. So, I'm happy to stand for questions. I guess the main point of why we are doing this is you can't, the city council can't speak about lease negotiations in closed session, so this would be an opportunity where the city's business, the city administration can still move forward, and we would not be in violation of any open meeting laws, and we get to keep whatever leverage that negotiate, those negotiation conversations may have. The council can certainly say, no, we don't want to do it this way, and then we would have these conversations in open air, which that's up to the council and if that's what they want. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Leah?
No, I think that's a great idea. I don't like these closed sessions. I just think we have to be more transparent. I think we get in trouble, and I think the public deserves to know, and the leasees need to know what was, you know, happening, so I'm well in favor of it, very.
I should clarify, when I say the, the meetings will not be open, they just won't be in violation of open meeting law. I should be very clear. So, there won't be a quorum of council members, and also, it's an ad hoc committee, meaning it's a particularly, it's a particular and temporary goal, and we have the case law and all the nice opinions to prove that up and know that we're in safe hands. So, it would not be an open...
It won't be televised.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Very important.
Okay, thank you.
And I think to RT's point, you know, always trying to get council members involved, I think in having two people, two council members on the table in this meeting, I think would be beneficial for all of us moving forward, so RT, you don't have to talk to all of us or whatever, it's, you know, we'll keep it, keep it moving, and we have to keep it moving fast, because we do have, you know, one thing that did come up recently is the property taxes that have to be part of, part of this, that we didn't have before, and it's something that's new, and we need to navigate through all that. So, what I would like to do is recommend Councilmember Cole and Councilmember Wong, because I think they're probably the least amount of council members who have been informed from RT in regards to all this, so that would be my recommendation, if there's any other... So, any other discussion for Leah? Questions? If not, if we could make a motion to appoint Councilmember Cole and Councilmember Wong for that ad hoc committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson, second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? Just like to say that, it's actually the phone call I got in the workshop, is that Soren would like to start this earlier than sooner, so time-wise, he's open to pretty much any time, so you can, we'll have to work out a time, and I, I think to work with city manager and the city attorney to start that process sooner than later. Okay, so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? The motion carries. I think that's all we have for the city manager. Reports, any reports from the city manager?
I could give you a couple of quick updates for...
I was going to say, maybe a couple of updates that you have, or...
Yeah, the downtown project is moving well. The, most, all of the flat work is done now, except for in front of the new apartment complex. Then, they've actually stopped the weekly meetings until they've finished up the siding, and then they'll be able to start doing the flat work on the south side of the road there in front of the new complex, but it's moving along well. It's nice to see the siding starting to go up on it now, since they've finally got that in, so it's moving right along. Absolutely, please.
Are they honoring that 7:00 AM? I know I got a couple complaints about that, they're starting work before 7:00 AM.
We discussed that, and Carrie was there as well at the construction meeting, and that was pointed out and strongly worded that they need to abide by that.
Thank you.
Yes. The car show was a wonderful success. Many, many people, sounds like a lot of the vendors sold out of food really fast. There were a lot of people down there, didn't really have any problems that are worth discussing. Everything went off pretty well. Public Works did a great job in preparing for that, getting everything ready. I just think it was a great success. Heard nothing but good things from the, the car show committee there as well, so they're looking forward to next Friday right away. The Seventh Street project, that's moving along. They have, the curbing is in, the first lift of asphalt is also done, starting next Monday. The electric department will be in there doing the joint trenching, and so we'll be installing the electric, gas will be there, and Comcast will be there as well, so that will be starting to install next Monday. So, the project's moving along as well. That's about all I have.
Do you know how long it's, they're going to, or when the first model is going to be open on the, on the Seventh Street?
I haven't got a completion date yet, but they have started. They've just, the, the concrete work is done, and they're working on the framing right now. I'm guessing mid-fall, but I can get that date for you from Doug.
Any other updates?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Reports of council commissions and committees, Councilmember Cole.
Next parking rec, meeting will be 7:28 at McKnight Field from 6:30 till whenever. There will be another community meeting held from 6:00 to 6:30 prior to, all are welcome. We had a community meeting on June 23rd at what I call Upper Casey, the upper, the upper parking lot. It was very well attended from some of the others that we've had. I don't know what the official sign-in sheet showed, but a quick head count, I saw 18 to 20 residents that were there, covered a vast number of topics slash concerns. Some of the, some of the topics and concerns that were brought up were noise from people renting the, the pavilion, and I think we've, we've heard that here as well, and what steps are we taking to, to ensure that whether it be time or the, or the noise level, something be followed. Large gathering taking place in the northwest corner of upwards of 200 people back in, back in that little area. It's very secluded. I don't know if, if that's, if the police, I believe they said the police were called on, on this issue, but again, there's just another, another concern of congregation of people back in that area where there's not a lot of, a lot of visibility from, from either the streets or the parking lot area. Trash being left in the parking lot, the fireworks, as we addressed earlier in the, in the workshop as well. One question did come up, and I don't know the answer. Who's responsible for what I'm going to call mowing, the mowing the lake? It's pretty green, and I know in years past that it's, I don't know if it was the Watershed District or who, but who, who takes care of the uptake, the upkeep on, on that?
Do you know?
I don't.
It's been going well since they've done any harvesting on there.
Are you talking about harvesting the...
Sure, I mow whatever.
Weed things?
Yes. Take the green stuff on the top and lower it.
Talking about Casey Lake?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, in terms of...
A short answer.
Yeah. Mill foil removal, or, you know, I guess whatever you want to call it, aquatic vegetation removal. I'm not aware of any other agency actively doing that on a regular basis, including the city. That may be something that Ramsey Washington Metro Watershed District would be willing to partner on, but that would be something that staff would have to explore. Whether it's mechanical, which, depending on who you talk to, has limited impact, because it just grows back, so it tends to be short-term and aesthetic-only. That's one thing, and then another thing is chemical treatment, I guess, by way of safe herbicides, right? So, that's another issue, but again, that likely would fall in terms of major agency responsibility with the City of North St. Paul, but we may be able to partner or find some partnership with respect to the Watershed District on that. That would be, but that would be something we'd need to look at.
Because I'm of the, I, it's harvested, mowing, it's, it's been done in the past, and I don't know who did it, but the questions were brought up, and I didn't, didn't have a way to answer the, to address the question.
And I, they have like a pontoon with a conveyor belt, and I was at Lake Elmo two weeks ago, and it was at the shoreline there, so I think in the past, they've usually done it once or twice a year at Casey Park. it once or twice a year at Casey Park.
Yep, you must have your request.
So is that something we reach out?
Yep, so I can do that tomorrow, and we did actually improve or made sure that the access for that maintenance was improved, not last year, but the year before. So that access is there, and if it's on their maintenance program, it might be just right around the corner, and we don't know, so I can certainly look into that and get an update back to council as well, too, in terms of what we hear back.
One of the residents also brought up a cost-sharing grant to remove some of the sludge from more of the north end of, of the lake. Staff is aware of it, and they've been working with, with it, but it was something that I wasn't aware of, so I thought that was interesting. There's also a desire to bring back the damage deposit to, for rental of the, of Casey Lake and Housy, I don't believe Housy's ever had one, but we've had damage to the, the area with, with some recent rentals, and I understand at one point in time it was a, a challenge due to the fact that we would cash a check, have to reissue the check, do something. I don't know if under the, under our new software, if we're able to, but I, I see a head nod. If we're, if we're better served to be able to bring that back, but there was a desire, not only from the park and rec commission, but from the residents around as well, to hopefully help bring a little bit more respect to the community and, and the assets that we have as well.
And I, and I think we need to address that sooner than later, because we are having damage done to our park facilities.
So next steps, does that need to be, does it just need to be brought up here?
I think our city manager will make that part of his up-and-coming, either workshop or make a recommendation.
Yeah, if I may, the, it's been almost every weekend that we've been occurring damage or extra work up there due to these. Unfortunately, a lot of people are having a problem being responsible up there, and it's, it's really unfortunate. The city's put a lot of money, time, and effort into that place, and to see it treated like that is unfortunate.
I promise I'm getting towards the bottom of my list. There was also comments made, there's, I didn't realize Ramsey County has an open space on the west end of the lake, which is accessible behind Harmony School, and there were just community concerns about there's been tent, tent communities that have popped up. It's not under North St. Paul, but it's part, it's part of the, of the Casey Lake area, and they just wanted that brought to attention. And Sue spoke earlier, she brought up the Northwood Park, concerns with the cellular tower, the cellular boxes and re, replacing the fence that I understand was there three or four years ago that was removed. So that really takes care of, takes care of the list. But great meeting.
Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, in the last meeting, as I had mentioned, the planning commission's been hard at work, so they're off this month, there isn't any meeting, and so the next one will be the first Thursday of August. To my knowledge, it's still via Zoom, unless I hear otherwise in the meantime.
I think we had a joint meeting with the EDA planned for next July 15th, and I don't know if that's still on the schedule or not, so I gotta reach out to the, both of those chairs to see if that's still on or not, so. Okay, Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the conference for the League of Minnesota Cities. It was good, it was virtual again, it wasn't networking like we're used to, but it was well-attended, I think, by Zoom. I learned a few things, I had some good speakers, and hopefully next year we'll be in Rochester, I think, in person. I was on a nominating committee for two days while I was doing babysitting to peer, but it worked out okay. The kids weren't neglected, cause the other grandma, we were doing kind of tag teaming. And we had two days of interviews, and we picked seven officials from all over the state, very good diversity and quality people I want to congratulate. Oakdale City Manager Chris Wolkers, Wolkers is one of them, so that's our neighboring community, so that's good to have somebody close to me, and we can kind of help our area a little bit, but it was a good, good two days, and that's all I have, thank you.
General business, unless you have anything.
I just had a question about the damage deposit. So when people rent the park, isn't there a, a way, or some sort of form that they sign agreeing that any damage is done, that they will be held responsible for that? I thought there was some liability type waiver, something they sign off on, either they, when they do it online, or if they come in, there's a form they fill out?
Would you have them sign a waiver? I'd have to double-check the legal. Speak on there about the damage?
Okay.
Being assessed back the damage.
Cause I guess that was, from my recollection, one of the reasons why we did away with the damage deposit was that that was already in there, and it was an assumption that when you're renting this park, you're agreeing to return it in the condition that it's in when you rented it, and that there was a, some staff member that would do some pre-inspection, and then afterwards they would go in and look, and if there was damage to the walls, or if there was garbage left all over, and there was some assessment on, it took Public Works 10 hours to clean up the park, there's a, there's a rate, there's a fee schedule, we would invoice them for the damage that they've done, and, and that doesn't sound like that's happening?
It hasn't, in my time here with the city, I do know, I'll take another closer look at the park policy, but I do know that when we, through Civic Rec, when they make their reservation, staff does when they send them their key code, you know, are reminding everybody that the park needs to be left in the condition that it is, and as far as, you know, staff inspections, I think mostly we're counting on our cleaning service, they're the ones who are notifying us, you know, what the condition or the damage of the building is. And I've been working on kind of a park study, and, and I'll check with Brian in the morning, but maybe that's something we can bring to your next workshop. I've done a study of what park facilities around us, what the rates are charged, who charges deposits, who doesn't, so you can kind of get an eagle-eyed view of what's going on. What I've learned from, from staff, they said that the software previous to what we've used was very cumbersome to issue refunds. I've looked into it with our new provider. The ideal situation would be to hold a credit card, and, and that's not an option that we have through the tool we have now, but as far as us issuing refunds and deposits back to residents, it's a much easier process in Civic Rec than it was, I believe they were using InCode previously.
I think part of the problem was that we'd have to, they'd put a deposit down, and then we would get the deposit, you know, a month later, or whatever, it's time-consuming. But I think charging somebody a deposit has more bite to not do damage than if you were to charge someone, and then go have to go back to probably take them to court, or whatever, cause they're not just gonna write a check right away, and, you know, I.
Well, and from what I've heard from staff, too, is they have tried to invoice people, and, you know, they don't get any action on those invoices.
Right, right.
When you, when, when the rates are, are shared with us, could you also share kind of what are some of the factors that kind of play into that number? Or is it just kind of, you know, this seems like a good rate, or is maintenance fee or service cleaning fees, like, you know, when I go to an Airbnb, those are tacked on, so just wondering.
And there are some parks, there are some cities around us that do that, that have very clear, you know, these are the setup charges, these are the cleaning charges, and so I've kind of put together a spreadsheet, and so hopefully, whatever Brian wants to bring it to, probably as a workshop, I've got some numbers to share with you. I'm still working on getting some photos from our cleaning people, so we can show you the condition, especially that Casey's been left in a few times, and I do have some of the additional maintenance costs that finance has gathered for us as well, so hopefully we can put together, you know, as much information as we can to help you with any decisions.
Lovely, thank you.
And I will reevaluate that park disclaimer, see exactly what it says.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. General business, Councilmember Cole.
Couple, couple quick things, had the opportunity on Friday night to make it down to the car show. What a phenomenal turnout, had the, had managed to maybe make it into a, a couple of the businesses while I was downtown. They were busy, they were hustling, it was just good to, good to start to see things return to, to whatever the new normal is gonna be, and it was, it was good to see the, the heartbeat of, of North St. Paul pumping again. The other topic is just RT, I'm happy to be on the committee, I'm looking forward to quick resolution. This existed before both Lisa and I came on, so it's, it's time, we gotta wrap it up. You're a valued asset to the community, and we need to, we need to make sure that you get treated well.
Councilmember Wong.
Ditto what Tim said, but yeah, I, I also think that the car show went really well, I attended with my siblings. One potential concern is we've had conversations about potentially opening the streets up and things like that, but also recognizing that cars are going through, and then if people are indulging in adult beverages, that may be something that we think about too in, in future years, or as we, you know, think about how that might work, because, I mean, it's popular, there are thousands of people there, and so just wanna make sure that everyone is safe as, as we do that. But definitely a huge success, yes, the vendors, I don't even know how long I waited in line for a lemonade, so it was, it was great, so yeah, that's all I got, thanks.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, same thing, the car show was just well-attended and awesome, and you do a good job back there, and, well, you have, you have, you have a team, I know you do, I know. And I wanna thank Public Works, because I went by Saturday morning, they were getting the garbage, cause you can tell, if it's a good event, the garbage is all over, but they had cleaned it up, and I think they're doing it up at Silver Lake, too, I saw a couple people on our, on a weekend or something picking up all the time, and I think that's great, I know it's probably overtime, but to keep our park, park clean is important, and I think, just well done, thanks, Ron, that's all I have.
Councilmember Thorson.
I just, one item, I got an email from Robbie Civil, he was the Eagle Scout that gave that presentation, I don't know if he sent that same email to the rest of the council, but I'm just gonna read it here, he's just put together, it looks like a flyer, but he said, got some facts about chimney swifts. Chimney swifts' feet make it impossible for them to land on branches, chimney swifts make their nests on vertical surfaces, chimney swifts fly up to 140 miles a day, and chimney swifts have, have lost a lot of their habitat due to chimneys being removed or just not being constructed anymore. And then he's got his name, for my Eagle Scout project, I'll be building a chimney swift house at the Southwood Nature Preserve, it would be awesome if you could make a donation, and he's got his information listed on there, so I don't know if maybe we can get that added on to the website and the social media, but he is actively seeking donations for his project. Sure. That's all I have.
What, what?
All right.
No, it's for all of us, your name's on it.
Oh, good.
Thank you for voting to give us a special permit to hold our car wash, I went to the car wash, and I gave a donation, and they cleaned my car. We love getting to know our community more, love the North High Cheer, so it's the cheerleader. So I mean, that's good, and they got all their little signatures, we don't get many thank you, so that was appreciative for high school students. Thank you.
Thank you. And you got one more, too? Go ahead.
Mine was more of a, more of a question that I forgot to bring up, Fall Roundup. We've had conversation about making Fall Roundup bigger this year than it's, than it's been in the past. What do we need to do to move that forward, whether it be, you know, events or music, you know, liquor license for tents behind, what, you know, things that have been done in the past, what do we need to do to, to move that forward within the, within the business community?
I don't know who's taking that.
The Business Association's taking the lead, you probably know Scott.
Yeah, I, the Business Association has been asked to take that on, and from my understanding, Brett Gary, who's the president, has said they will work on getting together, and I think the last time they talked, they were gonna reach out to Oakdale Chamber and see what they do as far as vendors and whatnot, but I think it's like anything else, they're always looking for volunteers, and so if people are wanting these things, in this case, I would reach out to Brett Gary at the Business Association and offer up your time and ideas. If you're in the business community already, the meetings are a second Tuesday of the month at 11:30 at the American Legion, so that would be my suggestion, is anyone that's contacting you to forward there to Brett Gary.
We do have the parade, and that is September 23rd. And that's kind of our Fall Roundup parade that we used to, but that is turned into, evolving into something bigger than just the parade. We're looking at food trucks, possibility, some face painting down there, some things going on that's gonna kind of fill that Fall Roundup, I, I think. Kerry, I don't know if you wanna just mention briefly, we've got, what, 30 people signed up so far?
We're at 34 units right now, we've got a lot of other interests, of course, it's, you know, people, like, I heard the council was gonna be in the parade, but I don't have their parade application yet.
That'd be Councilmember Cole, that's supposed to be doing that.
We have 34 confirmed units, we have other people who are very interested, just have not submitted their application yet. The last time the parade was held, we had 55 units, and I'm pretty sure we can beat that, I'm hoping. So the response to the parade has been good, we have a little bit of a lag, because a lot of the groups that have been in the parade in the past haven't met for the last 15 or 16 months due to the pandemic, so that is kind of slowing down some of the, the entries that we're getting. We've got a great turnout from the high school, we've got their multi-cultural dancers are gonna be in costumes going down the streets, we've got some really, really fun, I even got mosquito control, you know, we're really high on.
They'll be spraying, you know.
Yeah. So, you know, we work, work every day, do a couple other outreach every single day, but the response, people are really excited to see that the parade is coming back, and it's just kind of chasing all of our leads and, and getting them signed up.
And we did Manitou this on Friday, and I tell you what, people that were down there, thousands, thousands of people on that parade route, and they had half the units as they had in the past, so just to let you know that there are, there's still, I think, COVID restrictions out there in regards to a lot of these organizations, or, I don't know what it is, like you say, it's, I think they're lagging right now to try to get back, and maybe a lot of the organizations are gone, you know, I don't know.
I went through the roster list from 2019, the information we got from Elizabeth, and there's about three or four on the list that we had that just aren't, have dissolved and are no longer in existence, so that truly is impacting some of our re-recruitment.
Good, good. General business, everybody have gone through it? Oh, that's right, you're making up. All I gotta say is, car show, too, Bob, you know, we had a meeting this morning, and I wanna thank all your group, all your volunteers that helped down there. I also made it Friday night, and I was amazed by the amount of people that went through there, evidently supposedly it could have been a record. They went from one end of town to all the way down to the other end, which we didn't have before, and there was actually no major problems at all. You always get hiccups, but I think we, we got through them. Just wanna say thank you. I wanna say thank you to Brian and all the department heads as we move forward during this interim period. I wanna thank everyone for their support and working together. I think we've, we've had a couple of meetings now, and just the, the atmosphere is, we're positive, and we wanna keep the, the city moving ahead, so I wanna say thank you to all you, and to the council, so, for all your support. With that said, then, I don't have any other business, we do have a HRA meeting right after this, so motion adjourned?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cole, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned, our next meeting is July 20th at the same time, 6:30. Thank you, and we'll.